To the Finance and Construction Committee meeting. I've got the indication, but before we do that, we'd like to take a moment of silence for Ms. Brenda Cummins at Purnell Sweat, which was YDS Specialist at Purnell Sweat. Ms. Sandy White, the Cafeteria Sister at Lummerton High School. So we'll take just a minute.
Dear gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we can come and meet and make decisions for public schools of Robinson County, dear heavenly Father. Dear heavenly Father, just put your hedge protection around us, lead, guide and direct us, dear heavenly Father. Let us have good conversation tonight, dear heavenly Father. Dear heavenly Father, we just lift the families up that have lost loved ones. Dear heavenly Father, be with them, comfort them during this time, dear heavenly Father. We ask this in Jesus Christ's holy name, amen.
Okay, first on the agenda under topics is shining stars improvements. Mr. Hammond.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Williams, members of the board, those of you that are here tonight, do you have this passed out? Do you have this in your packet or we're going to look at it on the pictures of before and after? Okay, good, good. Okay, the shining stars began with a visitation of Superintendent Dr. Williamson and my boss, Mr. Bobby, meeting with the team there at the vacated building at the time where the industrial classrooms used to be at. And if you look at the before pictures, you will kind of get a glimpse of what the interior zones look like. The one to your right is the classroom at the back and the one in the center is actually the pass through between those two portions and the large open area. And the one on the left is the large open area or actually what we would have called the industrial side of the building. And the view that you're looking at there is actually if you'd be standing now in a classroom and if you could see through the walls, you would be seeing the entrance door from the existing classroom or the existing office area, that door that you see there. And what we did, the door that you see through the studs, all that's been closed off and there were about four offices that we developed there. They were needing more office space as well. Immediately to your left, you'll see an existing kind of yellow block building. Those were some existing offices and we've taken and converted those over as well. And they would be mostly file storage and I think there's one or two areas that she may use as an office in that. But that gives you a general idea of basically what we had and we began with. And we had the vision in advance and I met with Mr. Robert Locklear with LL&amp;J and we kind of showed him the sketches that the administration team had looked at and kind of how we wanted to lay it out. And Mr. Locklear basically brought this to life along with the contractors and the many ones who've had input into this. If you notice, the same classroom to your right, that's what it looks like today. Those are your exit doors going out. The same area that I referred to, that is the hallway going down between the two classrooms and over to your left is a picture of the observation rooms, which were actually built at the back portion of the complex. And the next page shows the bathrooms before and after. And Mr. Jason Furfact with Cornerstone, the contractor on the job, he was actually a plumber too as well. And this kind of gives you a layout of what all had to transpire underneath the cement before this could be developed. In essence, the, some of the existing plumbing, all that was left was just the bottom of the pipe in certain places and it was actually going on the ground. So they had to totally revamp that. And immediately to the left of this drawing, if you look to your left, that's actually going back into the kitchen area, which we plan on taking care of in phase two. So again, you see before and after. And then at the next page, you'll see a view of the entrance. And I was talking to Dr. Williamson when we actually had the original plans. Technically speaking, we've put the building back the way it was originally designed as far as the upper portion of it. Those two doors that you're looking at actually were the foyer in the very beginning on the original drawing. So that worked out well. And if you look to the right hand side, you'll see two views of the interior views of that area. The one on top is actually the one that goes into the hallway and the one at the bottom is actually looking back from this corner, inside corner back to the service window where the parents and children are served at. So that little piece of furniture you see there, they put them some kind of little bankster and our maintenance staff went ahead and built them something similar to what they had and put that there for them to service their personnel. Any questions or anything in reference to the shining star project? To give you an overview, we are in the process now of phase two kitchen renovation and we're going to have a walk through tomorrow around nine o'clock on the, our portion, the first portion of the renovation. And they were waiting on some smoke alarm heads to come in. I think they're in now, so we're getting ready to do a final walkthrough and do a punch list. And of course, after that, phase two of the kitchen is ongoing. And Superintendent and Dr. Bobby, Mr. Bobby and I, we're looking at trying to get this done on a very quick turnaround timeline. So I've spoken with the engineer on that and he's got us an idea on how we should move forward with it. And he's just waiting, I think, for the kitchen man to come back with his floor pan. Once he does that, we'll implement that and put some kind of cost estimate back so we can know about how much money we're looking at on that particular phase. Just a good estimate, Dr. Williams, I know you and I discussed this, a good estimate, we're thinking around 400, but I would figure 500 to down to 400, somewhere in that range. That's for the kitchen area. And those numbers are preliminary. That means there's been no actual computations made on that yet. That's just kind of based on some of the projects that currently are going out. So that's just tonight, you know, to give us an idea tonight. This time I'll entertain any questions that you may have in reference to this project.
Mr. Gentry, you hit your mic, Mr. Gentry.
Ernie, have there been any measures to regrade the surrounding grounds, soil to assure proper drainage away from the building?
Proper what now?
Proper drainage away from the building.
Yeah, there was, there is some existing drainage that was already there and actually the shining stars was one step above from where the floodwaters came. So that's basically it. And then you have the neighbors right next to us, which is the agriculture extension area. So they're a little more elevated with us, but yes, we've got the existing system in place and the plumber upgraded our drainage from that building to the existing plumbing section from the old portion of the building. So yeah, there's been measures made. And the final thing that we really wanted to look at was the grounds afterwards.
Mr. Ernie, a projection of completion that we can occupy the new portions of that building, can you help us with that?
Yes, sir. If we, once we do our walkthrough tomorrow, that portion of the building could probably as soon as we get the certificate of occupancy, it'll be ready to go. So I'm not anticipating anything that's going on to keep us from that. So actually it could be immediate depending upon your furniture and your classrooms and all that. I mean, you know, what you have from that infrastructure to set in place. And what sped the process up a little was to reiterate this, the first portion of it, what we considered the office area, we did most of that renovation in-house. So that helped us get an early start on it. And there were just a few things we had to sub out, but mostly it was done by maintenance personnel. So that helped speed up that portion of that. So then the contractor, he was in on the second portion, which is the old area that we had to reconstruct in which that is where your new construction would have came in. We actually did the mechanical work on the old existing structure as well. So we upgraded that as well in-house. So there was a lot that we saved on it by going in that direction.
Anybody else? Henry?
Ms. Ernie, I'd like to go on record saying, looks like you've done an awesome job. And I'm impressed with the fact that our maintenance is beginning to do more in-house work. That tells me that we have the craft, the skills and the capability to do what we need to do in times of emergencies. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And thank you and Dr. Williamson, our leadership team and the board for the opportunity to serve the boys and girls of this county.
Thank you, Ms. Ernie.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Mr. Bobby Locklear with HVAC Projects, S R two and three.
Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Superintendent Williamson, board members. So I'm going to touch on a lot of projects that we have ongoing through our S R two and S R three fundings, funding. And all of those are going to be our HVAC work, first round of playgrounds, our outdoor classrooms and our multi-purpose rooms that we're placing at St. Paul's High and Purnell So we divided our HVAC projects over S R two and three. Our first round of HVAC, we assigned or LL&amp;J won that particular project and we included six of our middle schools in these projects. They've currently bid those projects out, excuse me, and we are anticipating a begin date in the summer of all of these projects. So I've given you a brief statement of the work that's going to take place at each one of those schools. And as many of you know, Lummerton Junior is number one on that list. We have already signed the contract for that, for them to begin the work there. The system at Lummerton Junior is going to be a completely new system. There's going to be no part in that building that has old HVAC. When we walked the grounds of that school, when the contractors were looking to bid, some of the contractors looked at it and said, this was here when I was in school. So hopefully, knock on wood, August, Lummerton Junior will be up and running with a new HVAC system throughout the entire school. I've listed the price here for that the contractors came in on each site that we are working, LL&amp;J and Mr. Ernie are working to kind of see if there's spots in here where we can curtail a little bit of our spending, just simply because we are at about $8 million over the course of these six schools. So just to go back and look and see if there's places where we have new systems or newer systems and will not have to replace anything. So here we see Pembroke Middle, complete new system throughout the school is going to run us a little over 1.1 million prospect. We are doing, in the older building, we're replacing all the bar units and that's going to cost us about 1.7. Townton, and this is going to be in the older portion of the building along with the kitchen areas, about 1.2. Peterson, we did install two new units there, I think over last summer. So this cost does not include replacing those new units, but replacing everything without, throughout the school. And that's going to be about 1.1. Rex Renard, and I guess the best way to describe Rex Renard, if you've ever been to the school, this work includes the wing at the back that's connected to the gymnasium where the pre-K, I think pre-K three and four is back there and the wing of the school that's connected to the media center. So right at 800,000 to do those two portions of the building. And all of the contracts have been awarded to local HVAC contractors and all of the vendors have previous experience with us and come with a reputable recommendation. So that's all of the HVAC two work that's been assigned to LL&amp;J. We realized early on, any questions on those particular projects?
Just one comment, a lot of this work, if it goes on into summer, if we could, to be mindful if those places have summer school. And I don't know whether that will be an issue or not, if we need to move some summer schools when we get to that particular point, depending on the type of work going on.
Yeah, we've had the conversation how these particular projects and other projects are not only going to impact summer school, it's going to impact our summer cleaning, our summer feeding sites. So again, we know that this summer is going to look a little bit different with all the contractors and things we have going on in the district. So we also, out of S R two, we put out an RFQ for qualifications because we knew that the amount of HVAC work we had in our district, it was going to be very difficult for LL&amp;J to handle that broad scope of work. So we put out an RFQ earlier in the year and Snyder Electric actually won that. And so they are beginning to do HVAC two work for us at the high school levels. If you remember, we have HVAC three, HVAC assigned in S R three as well, that was totally dedicated to just the high schools. But we realized the money that we had set aside in S R three was not going to cover our needs at our high schools. So we came back together as a team and decided to pour Snyder in on S R two work. And so again, they have already been in our buildings doing needs assessments, walkthroughs, touching every piece of equipment that's in our high schools, so that we have a great ideal of the needs that are going to face us when we get to our high schools. Do not have prices at all for the work that's going to be done at the high schools. They told us, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Ernie, late next week, they should have a cost estimate from what it's going to cost them in-house. But what I do have for you, and it has two different pieces attached to the back of your pamphlet or handouts, is their automation scope that they've currently recommended for all of our high schools. Also, as a separate handout, they also have listed their recommendations of all the actual equipment that needs to be replaced at every site. Now, we met last week with the engineers from Snyder, walked through each one of these sites. Mr. Ernie and his team has been in conversation with them the entire way. So everything you see on this list is currently their proposal that needs to be replaced at the high schools. The work that they're going to do this summer through S R two, Mr. Ernie, help me out, is what we would consider a lot of the prep work, some of the piping and different things within the school that can need to be replaced before we actually get into replacing the equipment. So we feel that most of the equipment is going to come out of S R three, but a lot of the prep work that we can go ahead and get done before those funds expire in December of '23 can be taken care of with S R two monies. So again, I don't want to walk through all of these. I kind of told them I needed a list that the layman would understand, just tell me what we're replacing so that I could put this in your hands. And when you have those conversations with parents, community people, you can say, we're going to spend, Ms. Erica, roughly $23 million over the course of all of these projects. And these are the proposals at this point, depending on how that price point comes in. And we are meeting with them again next week to have another discussion about the scope of work that they have laid out for all of our high schools. With Lummerton High in this, in this project and S R, or with Snyder, Lummerton High would be our number one priority there, just simply because the piping is so bad throughout that building. Move on to, and again, a lot of these things you're going to see completed by the end of the school year. So here, here's where we're at in our S R two playgrounds, round one. We've completed all the schools listed at the top and I've included the number of set seat schools. God, if you've ridden by any of those schools, I can tell you, I've been surprised at how good they look. The crew that is doing the work, they typically try to do two schools and they go home for a couple of weeks and then they come back and try to do two more. So I visited them last week at Rosenwall, they were putting up the second set, that should be completed by now. Littlefield had their equipment dropped off. I spoke with Mr. Hamilton yesterday. And then the last one in this round is going to be Chapel. So I would dare say by the end of January, because I know these guys are going to want to go home for Christmas, I would dare say by the end of January, everything should be completed in round one and there's not going to be a delay in going to round two. And round two would give us playground equipment in every one of our elementary schools. Outdoor classrooms, so as part of our S R monies as well, we designated money set aside so teachers can go outside and teach their kids. And this is not just going to be a picnic area. We've incorporated whiteboards in these classroom areas. So when teachers go outside, it's just not a matter of sitting and having a conversation with children, it's going to be, they're going to have a board to actually work on. So the work, I spoke with Kirk and he is anticipating this work starting on the 12th. And here are, here's the order that he will begin his installation on. Again, although he's out of Charlotte, he is contracted with local concrete, Bales Concrete to get this work, to get this work done. And he is again anticipating this will be done. He shared with me, he should be able to do at least one to two per week, depending on how the weather will cooperate with him. Schools were able to order shades and poles to match their school colors. So again, when you go to a school, Purnell Sweat, of course, I think they did silver or gray poles with a blue top. So when you go to the different schools, you're going to see that the principals change colors that match their schools. And there's the price tag for this particular project was $875,000. Next, another S R project as well would be the additional classroom spaces at both Purnell Sweat and St. Paul's High. We partnered with LL&amp;J for this project as well. They've submitted their initial design to DPI, DPI NOW, and this is a new term that Jonathan taught me today, they've requested MEP. So now they're asking for the mechanical, electrical and plumbing for those plans. And also LL&amp;J is working with Duke Energy on how to supply power to the building.
Kid your brother. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bobby, before we get too far, I should have mentioned it earlier, on the HVACs.
Yes.
Union Elementary, I noticed a couple of years ago, we were still using old steam lines and we had, Mr. Ernie knows, we had quite a bill of leaks. We had one that was bubbing up beside the building. Where do we stand at Union with the HVAC system?
So does that make our systems there adequate?
Yeah, they can't hear you on the feed. I'm sorry.
Yeah, as Mr. Locklear had alluded to earlier, our plans are to look at some of these existing projects that's been designated as S R and some of the new equipment that may be included in this original scope. We may just back that out and try to squeeze and get more money to go to these other needs throughout schools. And that's our goal right now, to address as much as we possibly can in the county on some of those problems. But the leaks that you're referring to, they've pretty much been taken care of. Now, there are some condensate pumps that were still in the process of getting replaced, but they were just simple replacement things, it would be. But over time, our goal, if you've been noticing in the county, our goal is, we've been, over time, moving away from the fossil fuels, the boilers. And that's why you see a lot of your PTACs, because anytime you see a PTAC going in, that means that's heat pump. And that's what we've gradually been doing over time. So there's actually places that we're no longer using steam boilers, even though they're in place there.
Thank you.
So that's our goal. We do have a plan and we've been working towards that plan. And our goal is to try to get off of as much fossil fuel as possible to stay on the electric grid.
And also to piggyback on that comment from Mr. Ernie, as you can see from just six schools here, total of about $8 million, we really have a lot of needs in our county that we're trying to get our best bang for our buck out of this money, because we're not going to get it again. So we're trying our best to spend it as wisely as we possibly can.
Okay. Mr. Bobby, where are we at with the timeline of the classrooms at Purnell Sweat and at St. Paul's? Where are we at on this timeline? Because that, probably about a year ago or more, we hoped to have something going or some groundbreaking or something. So where are we at? Where exactly are we at in that process?
So I'm going to defer that to Mr. Jonathan.
I appreciate you guys letting me come in today and just give you a quick update on this. I talked to Roger, I was in the process of working on the Rest Branch Project. He's been working on the classrooms for Purnell and St. Paul's. And as Mr. Bobby alluded to, we have been back and forth with DPI and making sure that we're getting our plans to a point that when we submit this next round, that they're going to be hopefully final with the, as I was telling Mr. Craig earlier, with the red tape and all that, it's been a process. And every time we submit it, D P I, you're talking about six to eight weeks of a turnaround time. And our goal is to, when we submit this next round, is to go ahead and get our documents ready to bid and bid the project even before we get our final round of comments from D P I, because we don't anticipate that being much of anything. And as you can anticipate on this one, Mr. Leaks, there is a lot of, I call it specialty items with all the equipment and the the items that we have going in these classrooms and the the uh the column wraps, the flooring types that we've got. It's it's not just that we can go out here and bid this project like we would typically do a construction for Princeton and Meadowville. And this is a whole different animal, and we don't have a lot of contractors around here that can handle that. And what we want to make sure is that our plans are specifically spelled out for each individual item. So we don't have uh, I'll call it change orders, but we don't miss anything that the school system told us that you guys wanted in there. And as far as bid documents and whatnot, like I said, our goal is by next Friday to submit back to them. Uh we don't want to start a bidding process over the holidays. So the first of January, hopefully be putting something on the street that we can send out to everybody to get these projects moving.
You submit this in to Raleigh, so hoping, again, you're going to submit that after Christmas. Let's take it, let's say all that comes back. Could we say safely the end of February?
Well, this middle, we hope to get that out by next Friday.
Okay.
Get that in their hands. But they've already told us, you know, they're going to be out for Christmas, too.
Right.
A week of Christmas, and there there's a six to eight week lead time, if we're lucky, not going with this.
Okay. So end of February, first of March, where I was leading to, and and I know this is way hypothetical. If we get all these approvals, I'm going to say the middle of March. When can we anticipate when we would do the project and we would be finished with it? I mean, we talk in November, December, we talking going into twenty-four. Any idea on when it would be finished?
If we bid the project, just say we bid it in March.
Right.
Usually, we we bid the project March, say that's three to four week turnaround time of a project that size. We get back uh bids, you approve a bid low bidder in uh April. It normally takes about a month to get all your contracts through. And by the time we get started, we're starting in June. And Mr. Craig, to answer your question, it's really going to depend on the products and how fast we can get them. As you know, we just went through a couple of years of COVID. There's still a lot of HVAC equipment, uh other equipment that are going in that building, the Princeton Metal Building itself, that once we place the order or give the contractor a green light to move forward, it's going to depend on when he comes back and says we can actually get our hands on this material.
So when we, well, I guess, are are they, would it be more than one company? I know you got plumbing, electrical, all that. But is there a company that'll be looking at doing the building of the building and all of that? And then another company is furnishing the inside? Is that different companies, or is that our call, or where is that at? Would that be?
That will be depending upon if that's the way the school system wants to go with it. Our goal would try to be to do it all upon the one contractor, if possible. But again, this is a lot, there are a lot of specialty items in this particular building. Um as we, when we were meeting on this, we were going back and forth on just the equipment alone. There's four or five different companies out there to supply this type of equipment. And we brought in a couple, and we got presentations and whatnot and went through all that process. But at the end of the day, because it's federal funds, we can't just arbitrarily just award them that project. We have to, we got their specs, we can lay it out in that regard, but we just can't arbitrarily award it to them. So we have to work through that process. And as you all know, if you worked on the Red Springs project, you know what happened with trying to do allowance items and whatnot. It got us bid a little bit, and we got to be very careful about doing that again.
Well, all the influence you fellas have in Raleigh, just have a word with them up there, and we'll we'll keep going. I might, with Mr. Vontae, you know, an idea, because, you know, we looked at this, and I know it's it's been a process, but I believe it was like September of twenty-one, when we were meeting at Sweat and at St. Paul's. It was something like that timeframe there. So uh, you know, however fast we can get it done, we'll we'll be appreciative.
Yes, sir.
Jonathan, let me ask you the fact that there there would be prefab buildings would speed up that process, right, once we get started?
Uh, I don't know right now if that is uh the the case. And the reason I say that is, again, it goes back to the supply chain. Even if we were doing the conventional oil prefab, they're still having us a shortage of steel and joist. So it's just a matter of when we get it in the chute and where that supply chain is right now, Dr. Williamson. Um the prefab, what that does is eliminate you from having a lot of wasted material, and it allows you to be flexible. Once we get that building up, you can go under that roof, and you can change any wall or any setup in there to anything you want it to be, as long as you're not affecting those columns. So that's the beauty of prefab.
I want to make sure that I'm thinking correctly. When I see additional classrooms up here, and I'm hearing the discussions, are are we talking about the field houses in the classrooms? Is that interchangeable? That we're talking about the same topic, the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We we want, we want to make sure that we use the term multipurpose classrooms. So that's the reason we we've got up here additional classrooms, because they, those spaces will be used for weight training, physical conditioning, different things like that. So these are not just athletic buildings. These are actually going to be classroom, additional classroom spaces.
Are they going to be started at the same time, or one going to be before the other one? How are we going to do that?
My goal would be to, when we bid this project, is to set it up uh just like we just did a couple of press boxes at another school system. Set it up where we bid them, set them up as two separate buildings individually, and then give the contractor option of bidding both of them together and hopefully get a discount on that. But the key to that is making sure that they had the bandwidth to do both buildings concurrently. Our goal is to start both buildings concurrently, and that's what we're going to be shooting for. But if we can get one contractor to do, say he'll commit to getting both of those buildings done in that time timeframe as if it was one, uh and save us some money, that is, that's going to be our goal, so we're going to try to bid them.
So next, to give you an update on our um new career, Career Technical and Planetarium Design. So S F L and A sent us a new design timeline yesterday. So uh tomorrow, we're going to start walking through some of the design at the planetarium. We're going to walk, do a page turn for the entire building next Monday. So that's where we're currently at in November. March is where we, where more intense design work is going to take place. Uh they will begin talking about the structures of the building, on the materials, where things are going to go inside that building. So that come, once we have our meeting on Monday, then there's not going to be a lot we can change in the building, because then they have to get to March to kind of saying, okay, here's the building, here's what's going to go in the building, and here's what we're going to use to build the building. That April twenty-three early site enabling package, this is where they want to move on to Metcom and let Metcom, in essence, just start prepping the site. If there are things that need to take place in terms of dirt, soil at the site, then that's what they're going to start. Metcom will be allowed to start that in April. Um May and June, uh I'm just going to say, I guess this is where, this is where they're going to have the blueprints determined. And everything, once we get to that May, there's going to be no changing in the building. And everything is set.
Any questions?
Have the uh the principals at these two facilities been invited to participate in the uh the specifications for the design and the equipment for the inside of the buildings?
So throughout, we we've spent three days in Raleigh with Mr. Herman and his team, and also consultants from D P I designing what needs to go in each space. Uh we had that initial conversation, then we came back and met with Robbie and his team again to further have conversation about what programs are going in each space. So at this point in time, Mr. Herman and the directors have determined, yes, here are the programs that are going in. Here's what we anticipate the equipment in the building looking like. So yes, those conversations have been had. Um just upcoming and make you aware of the work we're going to be doing before Christmas break. As I've stated, tomorrow, we're going to meet, well, probably three to four hours here in the Blue Room, starting at nine, to do a planetarium walkthrough. And again, that's going to be part of the conversation tomorrow, is meeting with Mr. Brandt and his planetarium consultant to determine what needs to go in the planetarium, what the dome's going to look like, what equipment's going in the science center, to have those same conversations with Mr. Brandt and the planetarium consultant that we have with Mr. Herman and his team. So we're going to spend three or four hours tomorrow doing that work. On Monday, I believe we start at nine A M., and that meeting is scheduled to for till three o'clock. We are going to sit down with the architects and all of the its potential vendors that are going to supply uh equipment, furniture, what needs to go in each space. We're all going to meet uh again Monday and go through each space in that building one final time. And again, anyone is welcome to attend that meeting on Monday. We're going to be here in the Blue Room.
Anybody else got any questions?
And lastly, for my part, uh the General Assembly, I think two years ago, uh set aside three hundred thousand dollars for each district to spend in renovations, repairs and renovations, R and R funding. So uh Dr. Williamson and I have had some extensive conversations along with Mr. Ernie. And one of the places we would like to go and spend part of that money is at Parkton Elementary. As many of you are aware, just like with all all of our campuses around, everybody kind of needs a facelift. But to provide an additional facelift at Parkton, uh the currently, there's not what we would call an office area for folks to walk into. So we would like to go there and create a vestibule. We need, we would like to remove the lockers in the old building. So when we go there and do that, there is going to be some asbestos abatement in there. And for some reason, in the fourth and fifth grade building that's attached to the cafeteria, there's one classroom that has a slider in between. Everybody else has a wall, but this one particular classroom has a slider in between. And as you know, when you get twenty or thirty kids in the classroom and they start talking, imagine what the noise is going to be like. So we would like to install a wall in between those two classrooms. And one of the things that all of our schools desperately need, but Parkton needs it probably in the top five, would be a new facelift and painting. So we uh when we look at all of these projects, we're anticipating the cost of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars with the bulk of that coming in painting. And the painting would be the entire school. So again, we wanted to bring this um before you and let you know our intent at Parkton, uh so we can hopefully get started on this work as much as possible over the Christmas break. And also, I did not, and I apologize for this, I forgot. Um in the old building where the lockers are, if you're standing in front of the school to the left, the seventh and eighth grade building, we're going to need to replace the flooring in there when we remove those lockers out. So that's one thing that's not listed up here. So we would use a combination of the R and R funding, and we've also checked, and we would be able to sustain the rest of the cost through uh lottery funds.
Uh Mr. Bobby, also, when talking about Parkton Elementary, um keep in mind, right in front of the office, existing office, when we get severe rain, the water backs up on them almost to the point that it wants to run into the office. And there's a short hallway behind from one, the first building to the, well, that back building. And it also backs up back there. It's got a graded trench crossing the walkway. But they do, they do have a a problem with trenching.
Okay. Mr. Bobby, on on the paint in that part, is this going to be done? Are we going to contract this out, or are we going to do it in-house?
That we we have, we're going to contract this out. And the reason painting is such the bulk of this here, if you ever go to some of our old schools, we we've used different paints on top of each other, so it's starting to peel. So we have gotten with the paint, the painter has gotten with the vendor to to uh ensure we have a paint that prevent the peeling.
Oh, man, I'm glad you, I'm glad you're sitting there.
Watching.
I'm looking straight ahead.
I got you. I I know these vendors know this, but I I'm, my two cents worth on this, the painting they're going to do there, that they, and Mr. Ernie will notice, they do not use flat paint unless that flat has changed. Because you put that flat paint on in a school, and kids go rub against it. It's like it hadn't been painted. And there's some advantages of it, that, but that flat-based paint in a school just, it does not work. And you're absolutely right with all the different paints, and as old as Parkton is, uh if they don't put the right paint on there, you can pull your hand across it, and you can peel it off like tape. So uh again, just to comment on that.
And I think that covers all of my part.
Um next on the agenda is uh Red Springs Athletic Complex update. Mr. Jerome, you're in the hot seat.
Good evening, uh Mr. Lawson, superintendent, Dr. Williamson, board members. Just a quick update on the uh Red Springs High School Athletic Complex. Uh this project is uh currently complete. Uh we are waiting on all warranty books for the project, everything from the lights, the press box, uh plumbing, um everything out there, we're getting warranties on. Uh most of those warranties are going to be for a year. The track will be for five years. Uh the Musco lights, I think it's ten years. And Jonathan, you can correct me on that, but I'm pretty sure it's ten years on those lights. Um L L and J does have the final invoice for uh ants and construction. And um once that final invoice is paid, the complex will be turned over to P S R C. And um I already talked to Mr. McQuain about going over to Town Hall at Red Springs and getting the uh electricity and the water and all that good stuff switched over to uh P S R C. Uh we did have a little hiccup in the track, and we are currently working on a uh plan to correct that uh hiccup in the track. Uh can I ask any questions you have at this time?
What's the cost going to be on the hiccup?
Uh I do not know that. Don't, I do not know what the cost will be yet. We haven't uh, Jonathan, you could help me on this, but we don't have, we haven't had a company to come out and look at it yet. We did have a uh track guru that the High School Athletic Association sent down to look at the track, and uh he said he felt like it was just a simple fix. Uh basically going in that curve and take lane one out, smooth it down, put the rubber back down, put the line back down, and you're good to go. Um we talked to the track company that installed the rubber surface. He said, yeah, e- even doing that, he would be willing to come back, put the rubber back down, and he would still be willing to um give us the five-year warranty on the track. Most tracks, you get a three-year warranty. They're giving us a five-year warranty on this track.
Have you got that and written?
The warranty?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, long as it's in writing.
Yes, sir, yeah. And I know there was, we we had one question, and, you know, rumors get started out there. One, we had one rumor that the track was installed backwards.
That's what I heard yesterday, and I like to feel like.
The track was not installed backwards. Uh the track has actually been certified. It's certified legal by a track company, and um we just need to fix that one, that one spot down the curb with, we got that bad spot.
Anybody else got any questions from Mr. Jerome?
And even, and and even with the the hiccup in the track, I'm telling you, this this place is just a crown jewel. It is, it is a top-of-the-line complex. It really is.
And and so, Mr. Jerome, the hiccup is, that's a bump.
Right.
Is all that it is, and you can buff that out, is what we're being told.
Yeah, they they had to come back in. Yeah. They, they had to come back in and add some concrete in lane one. And when they added the concrete, where they added it to the concrete that was already there, they just didn't smooth the surface out. And when the track company come in, all they did was put that room material down on what's there. So it was not the track company's fault. It was, it was basically the contractor's fault for not following through and smoothing that one area out. You know, we, we had several different track companies come in to look at it. Of course, the, the contractors company that came in, so we had a track found. You know, the people we brought in said, no, it's not fine. It needs to be fixed. So that's where we're at with that. But we, we do not have a cost right now.
I, I just got one comment on it. It's safe to say whoever responsible for that hiccup is not doing no more work for PSRC.
Well, the, in our opinion, it was the contractor's fault for the hiccup. Now, the design of the track, they had to come back in and add concrete. When they came back in there to concrete, that was at no cost to us. These gentlemen right here paid for all of that cost for them to come back in and fix that track the way it should be fixed. And then once they came back in and fixed it, they did not do a very good job. And when it was all said and done, they basically refused to come back and correct. Now, you know, they would say, well, don't pay them, take them to court. And we talked about that. So what was going to happen is, yeah, we, we could have not paid them. We could take them to court. This could have stayed in court for one year, two years. In the meantime, the complex is sitting there, and we can't use the complex. And then the question was, well, they can turn the baseball and softball field over to you and not the track. They were not willing to do that. It was either take it all or let's go to court. And it was in our best interest to go ahead and take the project over and fix it ourselves.
When all was said and done, halfway toward it, it looked like we're going to come in on budget with the total project.
Right now, yeah, we are. We are, we're actually under budget on this project. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? No, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm going to follow Mr. Volante. Just say we will have future projects. And I'm going to leave it at that. We have, we will have future projects in this county, and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
And we all agree with you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Jerome. Next up is the 2022, 2023 operating budget. Ms. Erica, and she's up there ready to get it.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Lawson, Chairman Leach, Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and other board members. I have provided everyone with a copy of our 2223 operating budget. As I continue to say, this is a breathable, living document. It can be changed at any point. And as soon as this gets approved, I'll be submitting amendments because we constantly get changes to these documents. I'm not going to go line by line. I just wanted to hit some highlights, if that's okay. Collectively, this entire budget
Say it one more time, Ms. Erica, a little bit slower.
Okay. Collectively, through all of our funds, this entire budget represents $395,747,435.32. Collectively, we have seven funding sources. State Public School Fund, and that represents a little over 44% of the total budget. The local current expense represents 6% of the total budget. Federal programs represents close to 40% of the budget. Capital outlay funds represent right at 3% of the budget. And enterprise funds comprised of child nutrition, shining stars, and primetime represent a little over 6.5% of the total budget. So almost 85% of this budget is state and federal funds, which, as everyone knows, is not very flexible. The state gives us different program report codes that dictate how those funds can be spent, and the federal government has an even more detailed process for spending those funds. And of course, our federal is elevated this year because of our ESSER II and ESSER III funding. And Mr. Bobby has gone over most of those projects. Those included also in that funding is the bonus that was just approved by the board last month. Does anybody have any specific questions you want me to go over? I know it's a, it's a 64-page document, and it's line by line of every, collectively, everything we're paying up to this point. And I got another revision today because, so like I said, once this is approved, I'll be submitting budget amendments because things constantly change, and the state issues, new allotments and so forth. With our state and other budgets, there was an average of a 4% salary increase included for staff. We brought all classified employees to $15 an hour. All of those changes are included in this document, as well as an increase in your retirement benefits from 24.10% to 24.5%. Hospital insurance per person increased from 7,037 per person to 7,397 per person. All of that is included. I did want to mention, PSRC, a part of our initial allotments, experienced a decrease in ADM of 398 students, which is a shade less than 2%. That has kind of stabilized, and our average has been about a 2% decrease in ADM. I have information on where we were in 2000, between, since the year 2000 up until now, we've lost 3,349 students. And that's looking at our initial allotments each year. So over a 22-year span, we have lost almost 15% of our staff from that time, I'm sorry, of our students from that time till now.
I just recommend go home and look at it at your time because it's lengthy, and there's a lot of it. And I know Ms. Erica makes it look easy, but it's a hard job keeping up where all of it goes.
And I can almost email, I can also email this spreadsheet to everyone because I know everyone's not present tonight. I'll make sure I get that done over this week. And you can call me, come by and see me, email me, any questions that come up. And again, this, we can change this document, add anything to it at any point. And I'll be making amendments once this original budget gets approved.
Action item, does the board need to do anything tonight?
No, we, we, we have an action item on Tuesday night.
Okay. Yes.
Henry, you got your, you got your mic on? Hang on a minute. I got you.
Ms. Erica, do you have a ADM per student at this time?
I can get that. It's probably close to around 8,200 per, if you include, excluding child nutrition funds, 8,200 is, is the approximate amount. And I'll verify that by the board meeting.
Mr. Randy?
I got you.
Okay. Folks, if you never went and had a one-on-one with Ms. Erica about this, I encourage you to do so. One-on-one with her, 30 minutes, you'll still be confused. Stay a couple of days, you know, and not because of what she's doing, but I'm just saying that's the best way to do this thing. We, we could sit here for four or five hours, like what Mr. Randy said, and it's still mind-boggling. But one-on-one situations with, with this kind of stuff here, had, for me, has been very helpful.
And this is a lot to digest. And I just, if, if you have pieces of the budget or areas that you would like more information on, if you'll let me know, I can make that part of any future presentations. If you are more interested in how a certain area has changed over the years, I have a lot of historic data. It's just, I'm not sure what everybody wants to see, and it is a lot to present everything.
Everybody good? Thank you, Ms. Erica.
Thank you.
One question. Is there anything that Mr. Bobby and, I'm saying, in the construction and if I missed part of that that we need to?
No, no. Oh, that was approved under the ESSER plan that was approved.
Mr. Bobby, is there anything on Monday that's going to come Tuesday needing anything with the construction part? Okay. I'm good. I'm just asking, I want to know. I'm sorry, Mr. Grant.
That's one. Do we need to approve that for Parkton?
That's what I was going to say. We do need to, if we could, do for Parkton.
It can be done in here as a recommendation to the board. The recommendation, finance construction can do it as a, because it's additional with the capital outlay we had for this year.
We can. Erica, you and I had that conversation. In fact, that is money from DPI, not part of, but yes, we can, and we'll put it on.
It wouldn't hurt if we could. That way we all be covered.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the funding for the Parkton Elementary School.
Go ahead. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes as a recommendation to the board on Tuesday night. You got all that, Ms. Erica? Can your mouth? All right. If nobody has anything else, Dr. Williamson?
Mr. Chair members, I just, I want to say thank you to this wonderful staff, the work that they do, very detailed information tonight, a lot of information. But we are blessed with the folks connected to this school system doing this work. This is impressive.
We thank you all from the board. I know you'd be here Wednesday night, but we're going to wish you Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and all those good things too. But enjoy your time with your family. Mr. Gentry?
Randy, I'd like to add what Superintendent Williams just said. And I will do this with a specific example. Like, like we all do, I, I get out and visit schools and, and talk to the principal and others. And, and I know there has to be some betting in terms of what projects get first priority. But I'm, I'm going to state a specific instance. And that is, it was that Magnolia School was at a, a critical point in terms of being able to store food. And they were having to use cafeteria eating space to do it. And I got in touch with Mr. Bobby, and he started the process to get it done. And I, I checked with the principal today, just going by and speaking, and I asked him, Mr. Charles, has that been done? I found out I was way behind. It'd been done a long time ago. So I'm saying that, not only to commend Mr. Bobby, but I'm dovetailing on what superintendent said. We've got an outstanding, outstanding staff, and I greatly appreciate it.
Most of the time, and, and I say this because I, I do call Mr. Bobby occasionally, but when I call him, if he don't have an answer, he'll get back with me or send me an email, and I'm good with that. I'm not trying to take too much of his time up, but it's something that I've been questioning about, and I may not have the right answer. So Mr. Bobby always comes and, and fills me in on it. Mr. Ernie, thank you for what you do with the public schools and each and every one of you. But there's some major construction going on and some finances behind that. And like you said, you're looking at $395 million as a, as a budget for the public schools of Robles County. That's a lot of money. So, and we just need to be good stewards of, of what we have been given, is what I say. If we have nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you for coming.